Well, with that, Eileen, I think you can open up the, uh, the meeting with the opening statements, please.
Sure. Township of Howell Zoning Board of Adjustment, Monday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, regular meeting. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board's been opened adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, four, five, six, seven, Route nine, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV seventy-seven. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and a decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the raise your hand feature when the chairman opens up the hearing for members of the public. Once you're brought into the meeting, you'll need to have both audio and video, and you will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise or lower your hand, and star six to mute and unmute yourself.
We, we got an open mic somewhere. I keep hearing it.
Mr. Ryan, I believe it's coming from.
Okay. All right, Eileen, thank you very much. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Barillo.
Yes, here.
Mr. Kanter.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Martins is coming late. Mr. Roscoe.
Yeah.
Mr. Stanton is excused. Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Rubell.
Here.
And Chairman Sayah.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Eileen. Will everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, which stands, one nation, indivisible, and just for all. Okay. Mr. Bear, can we have a swearing-in of the professionals?
Yes, can everyone, Ms. Beam, Mr. Conliff, and Sherry, spirit of their hands raised. You swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God.
I do.
Your professionals are sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to item five, approval of minutes. A regular meeting, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, eligible voters, Kanter, Hughes, Martin, Stanton, and Rebel. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, please.
Hughes, do we have a second?
Second.
Got it. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kanter.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. and Mr. Rubell, sorry.
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Thank you. Approval of minutes, regular meeting, November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Eligible voters, Kanter, Hughes, Martins, and Sayah.
Bless you.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Kanter.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Regular meeting, December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, eligible voters, Kanter, Hughes, Martins, Orozco, and Rebel. Motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Hughes.
Second.
Orozco, roll call, please, Eileen.
Mr. Kanter.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
And Mr. Rubell.
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes, regular meeting, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Eligible voters, Kanter, Hughes, Martins, Orozco, and Sayah.
I'll make that motion.
Hughes.
Second.
Orozco, Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Kanter.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Thank you. Last on the approval of minutes. It's the reorgan regular meeting of January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, eligible voters, Barillo, Kanter, Hughes, Martins, Orozco, Stanton, Ryan, Rebel, and Sayah. We have a motion.
Motion.
Orozco.
Second.
Hughes. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Kanter.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Rubell.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Thank you. Eileen, any vouchers?
No vouchers tonight.
Eileen, do we have any correspondence?
One thing for correspondence, case number BA oh eight twenty-four A, Rod Zarelli will be carried to March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three with no further notice. An extension was given to the board through April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay, April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, you said, right?
April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
April thirtieth, okay, got it. Okay, so for anybody in the public that is with us, that is here for case number BA zero eight twenty-four A, Rod Zarelli. This is a use variance and preliminary final and major site plan. Uh, this application is being carried to March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three with no further notice, and the board has extended the application expiration date to April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you, Eileen.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we went through that one. All right, now next up on the, uh, agenda is resolutions. And so what we have here is A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. Um, so we're gonna go through all of them. Okay, Andy, can we do them all in one bunch?
Um. You could combine them into one resolution as long as you identify in the resolution that you're approving all four together.
Okay. So, resolutions for our professionals. A zoning board attorney, A zoning board engineer, C zoning board planner, and D zoning board licensed tree expert. Can I have a motion to approve the four professional?
Motion.
Motion by Orozco.
Second.
We got a second, Hughes. Eileen, for the first four, A, B, C, and D, roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Kanter.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Resolutions approved.
Okay, thank you. All right, resolution echo, case number BA nineteen dash seventeen Foxtrot sixty-five twenty LLC. This is a final major site plan, eligible voters are Kanter, Hughes, Martins, Orozco, and Rebel. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve that, sir.
Hughes, do we have a second?
Second.
Kanter, okay, Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Kanter.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
And Mr. Rubell.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Thank you. Item Foxtrot, case number BA twenty-two dash zero two Sierra Papa, Kayland Corp. This is a resolution granting preliminary final major site plan to construct a three-story self-storage building with associated office space. Eligible voters, Kanter, Hughes, Martins, Orozco, and Rebel. Can we have a motion, please?
Motion.
Orozco.
I'll second.
Second. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Kanter.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
And Mr. Rubell.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Thank you. Last for resolutions, we have case number twenty-two dash nineteen Christopher Moreno. This is a resolution granting bulk variance for swimming pool, concrete, walk patio, and retaining wall within the rear yard setback. Eligible voters, Kanter, Hughes, Martins, Orozco, and Sayah. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Kanter, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Hughes. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Kanter.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Thank you, Eileen. So, as we know, Rod Zarelli, that applicant, has been carried. Um. And so next on the agenda. Eileen. I think I got a typo. Oh, here we are.
It should be Paul Vallejo.
That's the one. Yes, it is. Okay. Paul Vallejo, application of, this is case number BA twenty-two dash sixteen, Paul Vallejo. Bulk variance. The description, application of Paul Vallejo as applicant and owner of premises known as thirty-seven Jennifer Drive, block thirty-three dot zero two, lot five, seeking bulk variance approval for recently constructed in-ground swimming pool with associated paper patio that was installed within point seven feet of the easterly rear property line with one point one foot from the northerly side property line. Relief is also required for PVC shed structure, which is installed within one point five feet of the northerly side property line, the application previously heard on December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The expiration date on this is March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The eligible voters are Kanter, Hughes, Martins, Orozco, and Sayah.
Mr. Chair, if I may interrupt quickly, uh, Mr. Martins has texted, and he is with his hand up, Eileen, it's all sure in the waiting room, please.
Okay, we'll bring him in the meeting.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
May I proceed, Mr. Chair?
Yes, who's representing tonight?
Justin Ossielo, on behalf of the applicant, Paul Vallejo.
Okay, Mr. Bear, we're good?
Yes, Chair, I'm here now. Can you see me on the screen?
Yes, we got you, Mr. Martin. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ossielo, are you a, a, a planner?
Professional. I had appeared on this application on December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, um, representing Mr. Vallejo.
Okay, so why don't we just swear you and Mr. Vallejo in for the purposes of tonight. Raise your right hand, you too, Mr. Vallejo. Uh, do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Can Mr. Ossielo just say your name and spell your last?
Yeah, um, Justin Ossielo, and that's A U C I E L L O.
And Mr. Vallejo, the same, please. Can you just say your name, please?
Sorry, I had to unmute myself, sorry, Paul, P A U L. Vallejo, V A L L E J O, Paul Vallejo.
Mr. Ossielo, you may proceed, or give it back to the chairman, they should say.
Yes, Mr. Ossielo, so you, um, you wanna bring us up to speed where you're at with this application since December?
Yes, Mr. Chair, so, um, so back in December, uh, we made some progress on this application. I had gone through, uh, the positive criteria. Uh, then there were some questions, uh, from, um, uh, from the planner and the engineer, um, you know, relative to the drainage on this property. Um, since, since that time, the applicant, um, had reached out to, uh, his, his engineer and surveyor and had some new work done, uh, namely, a new survey, uh, with, um, with topo and, uh, and, um, a spot elevations on his property. There were some questions about, um, you know, the drainage from, from the patio pool area, uh, you know, onto the adjacent properties. So this evening, um, Mr. Vallejo, or, you know, I'm prepared, uh, to go over, uh, the plan that was submitted, um, to the board, um, by the surveyor. Um, if it's okay, may I ask, um, your engineer to pull up that survey? A topographical with, uh, with spot elevations?
Charlie?
Thank, thank you, Charlie. Uh, this, this is a survey of the property, uh, with, with spot elevations. This was prepared by, I'm sorry, Charlie, can, can you go over to the, uh, the key box? Martin Miller, the third, dated, I believe this is dated January twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-three. Actually, um, January thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty-three, with, uh, the, the, the conditions as of, uh, January twenty-fifth, uh, two thousand and twenty-three.
January twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three is what we're looking at on the screen?
Correct. Yes, January twenty-ninth. That's right, Ms. Beam, thank you. Um, there were some questions from, from Mr. Conliff and, uh, and Ms. Beam, you know, relative to the drainage on this property. Uh, so, uh, as I had said, uh, the applicant went back and, and had this work done. So this plan, as you can see, depicts, uh, the elevations on the property. Um, and you can see that the elevation, um, uh, back to where, where the pavers are located. Uh, or I guess you would say the, the north, uh, eastern or western portion of the property, uh, is at eight, nine, point eight-nine. Um, and then the Mr. Conliff, if you can bring, bring it up to the street, please. And this goes down, um, to, to an elevation at the street of, of eight, seven point one eight. Um, all the way to the left, and then also has an elevation all the way to the right, near the property line of, uh, eight, six point seven-six. Um, so really, the, the intention of, of this, of this exhibit, uh, is to demonstrate that, um, you know, from the drainage perspective, and of course, we're here this evening on a second hearing, uh, because the, the pool patio, uh, that area, um, was, was, was recently constructed. Uh, and of course, uh, a variance is required, um, for the setback there, and also for the shed, which is adjacent, uh, to the dwelling, uh, in the center of your screen as well. So I believe that the, the, the questions or concerns, uh, not, not, not necessarily concerns, but there were questions, uh, to, um, you know, relative to whether this drainage would have a, a negative impact on, on the neighboring property. So, of course, the intention of this exhibit is, is to demonstrate you just plain facts with the elevations, um, that, uh, that's, that's not the case. Um. So I believe that, that's, that's, that's the testimony, uh, for this exhibit. Um, we were, we, we had, actually, I should probably stop there, and I should probably ask if, um, Ms. Beam or, uh, Ms. Conliff have have any questions for me about, about this work?
Charlie, we'll start with you.
Charlie, you're muted.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I apologize, I hit, my thing was going to a different microphone, I apologize. Uh, so, a couple of things I just wanna point out for the board here, um, along the northerly property line, the survey information that was provided, um, the survey shows that the northerly edge of the applicant's patio is plus or minus eight inches to a foot higher than the neighboring property to the north. Believe that's lot six. So, uh, you know, obviously, that's why we asked for this survey information to discern whether or not there is any impact to the neighboring properties. The reason that the ordinance specifies pool sidewalks to be ten feet from the property line is to allow the applicants to grade the yard area to the property line to maintain drainage patterns and things like that. Uh, the concern that I have for the board and potentially for the neighboring property owner, and potentially we'll hear from them during public is, um, you know, this water right now, the pool coping's at eighty-nine forty-eight. Um, but the majority of the northerly edge of this, uh, patio is at eighty-nine thirty-one. So this area, north side of the pool generally just sheet flows off the edge of the patio, drops down a foot onto the neighboring property, and whether that causes any impact to the neighboring property, um. Uh, speaking with Mr. Aguirre earlier today, we're not aware of any complaints for the neighboring property owners, and John, you can correct me if I'm speaking out of tune here. As far as drainage complaints, having said that, we haven't actually had one of the rainiest, you know, past twelve months that we've had in a while. Um, you know, we have had instances in the past where we've made applicants take out patio and put in a recharge trench or a curb or a, or a trench drain to capture that water, so it's not just cascading onto the neighbor, neighbor's property line. Um, I think that's something, if the board were particularly concerned, or if the neighbor to the north is particularly concerned with that, um, you know, that might be something we need to discuss as a condition of a board, a potential board approval for this. Along the rear property line, so the easterly property line, the high point for the patio is generally the northeast corner of the patio, and then it pitches in a southerly and easterly direction. Uh, looking at the arrows, I can tell you the back corner of this property is predominantly wooded. So there's some vegetation to soak up some runoff and things of that nature. Um, having said that, you know, let's maybe hear from the public whether there's any concerns, uh, from the neighbors in that perspective. And then the, uh, other two items that I wanna point out, other than obviously the setback for the walkway to the north and the easterly property line not complying, there's a fence, an existing fence along the easterly property line that's shown on the neighbor's property. We kinda discussed that during the last hearing. That's a fencing for a pool. By code, it's required to be applicant's fence on the applicant's property. So I don't know if the applicant can provide some testimony on how the fence got their approvals. And then the last open-ended item is this final shed located to the north of the dwelling. Uh, there was some question about a commode, uh, being utilized there and any other activities. Um, right now, I believe if it's under eighty square feet and it's less than eight foot in height, our ordinance has an exemption where it can be placed zero foot from the property line as long as it's for residential storage. So, um, I think we need to hear some more from the applicant on the fence and the, and the shed.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. Jen?
Um, I, I'm, I agree with what Charlie has, has to say. Um, but I'm interested to hear, like, the positive and negative. So right now, we're just hearing kind of what's going on, um. But, so I'm gonna reserve my opinion until I hear the, the ultimate testimony.
Okay, Mr. Ossielo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so the last hearing, I briefly went through the positive criteria, but I believe there were, uh, a number of questions um, that came my way, you know, during that testimony. So I'll, you know, briefly go through that again, just for the purposes of the record, you know, to ensure, um, that the, um, you know, the record is, uh, you know, um, you know, full and complete. Um, you know, relative to the positive criteria, um, I would say that, you know, my analysis of, of the, of the site in this surrounding area, uh, you know, pools and patios are, are, um, the neighborhood norms. Um, I'm not sure if I have permission to pull up, uh, my screen, or if, if Charlie can pull up an aerial um, of the site. I'm not sure if that was included in the application package, but I will, uh, I will pull up my screen, that's easier. Sorry, please bear with me, I haven't done this in a while.
Mr. Chair, will we have to mark these? If we pull something up?
Yeah, we should.
Yeah.
While he's, Mr. Ossielo's doing that, Eileen, did we mark any exhibits at the last hearing?
I don't have any aerial photos.
I'm saying anything else, I don't know what we did mark, if anything. Other than what was in, what's in the online?
No, I didn't receive anything else.
Okay.
Where, do you, where's our last exhibit, Eileen? I think we did look at aerials on this, though.
See, I, I'm not sure if this was included in the application package, but, um, can everybody see my screen?
Justin, just hold up a second, we're trying to figure out if this is like A one or what the number of you.
Sorry, okay.
So do we have a list, Eileen?
Yeah, we have an exhibit list. It goes to A nine.
So this will be A ten?
Well, I think we should mark the, um, the survey A ten, and then this, we'll do this as A eleven.
How do we mark a, a screen grab like that, Andy?
Good question.
That's your job, man.
Maybe Mr. Ossielo can, like, just print or submit something electronically or to Eileen after, after we're done.
Andy, if I can just clarify the survey that I shared, that was exhibit A dash ten, it's property survey dated January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, so it's already been marked.
Rich, did you say something? I'm sorry.
No, that's up to you. You're the secretary, you need to know how to mark it.
Okay.
Yeah, don't, no big deal.
Okay.
All right, so if the survey was ten, they, which I said, well, then we'll do this as eleven, the overhead.
What I can do is I can just, uh, when I bring it back up, I can just do a, um, screenshot, um, which will be the, you know, verbatim image that I'm gonna share right now. If that works, or I can email that to Eileen.
Snip it and save it.
Perfect.
Sounds good.
May I share?
Please.
Okay. Okay, so this is the, uh, this is the site. Site, uh, is depicted by this red, this red, uh, object right here, and while we're here, I'll just do a quick little screenshot. So you can have this, uh, for, for the record of the file. Uh, so as I said, um, uh, Jennifer Drive is located here, uh, the house is obviously on, on Jennifer Drive, but the, the intention of showing this exhibit, I just want to, you know, make it clear that what's being presented and proposed, uh, this evening, uh, is a pool and a patio. Uh, the pool, um, this Uh the pool, um this, this exhibit obviously is a bit older. It, it doesn't currently predict um the condition that's today, but it's generally in this area right here. Uh with the patio and, or the pool and the surrounding patio, right, right in this area right here. Um, and I mean, I, I think the, the picture speaks a thousand words here. Uh there, there are pools on Jennifer Drive. Um, there are pools on Melissa Lane. I mean, just, just by my, my rough count, um one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Uh it, it goes on from there. Um but the, the intention here is just to show that what's proposed is really not out of character, the surrounding area. Also, I think it's important to note right here, uh this is the uh adjacent property, which is depicted partially on the survey. As you can see, uh the pool and patio is adjacent uh to this area that is trees and this is portion of the property is, is not utilized um by, by the property owner. So, so that's, that's just to uh, to, to orient the board um with um the, the relationship between the site, what's proposed and, and the surrounding area.
So, so Mr. Rossiello? Yes. When we look at the, the rear fence, is that fence line on the applicant's property or is that on the neighbor's property?
So I, I believe um, you know, the applicant can, can maybe speak to that. Um, he is here. Um however, uh I believe that he does have a documentation uh from the township uh for a um permit uh for that fence. So I'm not, I'm not sure exactly.
If I can just interject, I think the chairman is asking the question because when you look at the survey, it shows very clearly that the fence is not on the applicant's property. So, you know, I mean, property owners go out there and they don't a hundred percent know where their property lines are. But if you look at the survey, it, it's very clearly on lot twelve.
Agreed.
So, so that is, I, you know, in my opinion, that's going to have to be reconciled. Like you're going to have to move that fence back onto your own property.
All right.
It cannot remain on someone else's property.
Jen, thank you. Mr. Aguirre? We'll get to you, Mr. Vallejo.
Okay.
John, you're muted.
Yes, sir.
Talk to me.
So what would you like to know?
The fence line in the back, whose property, what? What, what, what was it, what was approved and is it installed in accordance with the approval authority?
So uh as per the survey uh that everybody's looking at, uh the fence is actually on the neighboring property. Uh the application or the permit that was supplied doesn't have any um uh any drawings uh associated with it. I can tell the board that it looks like it was approved back in twenty fifteen, a time when uh way before my time uh being here, but uh I could tell you that there was no verification uh where fences were placed. Uh it was just an approval. Um, the, the assumption is that the property owner understood that the work that was being done is going to be on their property.
Mr. Vallejo?
Um, yes, so in addition to um the topography that I provided, I also provided pictures of um the neighbor that lives at one twenty-seven Locust, which is the property in question. Um, he gave me the survey uh from when he moved in. I think they moved in um a year or two ago. Um and his survey shows that uh my fence is not on his property line. Um and I also provided paperwork showing the permit and also the approval of the fence once it was completed from Howell Township. And that's, that's, that was uh dropped off the uh thirteen days ago or, you know, I know everything had to be handed in ten days before the hearing and so that's in uh my packet if someone can pull it or.
I, I'm just going to jump in. The survey that your neighbor provided doesn't show anything on your property at all. It doesn't show the location of the fence at all. It has no improvement shown on your property. Your prop, your survey that you submitted with this application shows the fence not on your property. So what I would recommend to the board is that your fence is going to have to be moved back onto your property. And then an as-built survey of the location of that fence is going to have to be submitted to this board to verify that your improvements stay on your property. You, you don't have, you know, you can't put your fence on someone else's property. So you know, that survey that you submitted of your neighbor doesn't show the location of the fence at all. There's zero improvements on your property line, on your property at all. Um, so you know, that being said, that would be my recommendation. You know, I also have some concerns about the proximity of the, of the patio to the property lines and the topography, which basically is going to allow in a heavy rain event, water to just sheet off to the neighbor. Like in my opinion, the, the patio should be cut back a little bit and some kind of drainage feature needs to be installed on the property line because you know, the part of the reconciliation of a, of a C-two variance, which is what you have here, is that there's no negative impact to the surrounding land uses and creating a condition that could potentially have runoff, sheeting off your property onto a neighbor that is lower is a negative impact. And to me, that negative outweighs the benefit of an extra couple feet of patio. So I mean, that, Mr. Chair, is what I would suggest because, you know, the reason that initially, if you think back now, I know, Mr. Say, you and I have been around this rodeo a long time. The reason that we changed the ordinance from the pool being set back ten feet to the walkway being set back ten feet was this exact issue, was that the drainage would not run off onto the neighbor. So I, I don't think they need to pull it back ten feet, but they definitely need to pull it back off those two property lines enough. And I would leave it to Charlie to figure out what would be most appropriate along those property lines. But I don't think you get over the negative criteria hurdle without pulling it back and creating some kind of drainage feature um to capture the water before it goes on to the neighbor's property. And it doesn't really matter whether that piece of property on lot twelve is being used or not. It's their property and we can't allow a condition to move forward that could potentially create a negative impact onto someone else's property. That's kind of flies in the face of what the variance situation is. And that was the very, very reason why we changed the ordinance in the first place.
Thank you, Jen.
Fellow board members, does any one of you have a question for the applicant? Nope, this time, sir. I'm looking at the pictures and what we're talking about here.
Mr. Chair, um, if I may, may I, may I have a minute or two to speak to the applicant?
Mr. Rossiello, um, I'm, I'm open to the fact that, yes, you can. But I'm also asking my fellow board members, you know, I think it's a good time to see if any of the neighbors who are with us today have any comments as well. So I'd like to open it to public following your discussion with Mr. Vallejo.
Justin, do you want to meet now or do you want to hear all the comments before you take a minute?
Yeah, yeah. Uh I mean, if, you know, we can hear from the public, that would be um, you know, helpful for the applicant, I would say.
So why don't we let do that and then give them five minutes to figure out what they want to do?
Great. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to open the public then. Mr. Hughes, open to public motion. Do we have a second? We got a second. Mertens and Roscoe, same time. Okay, all in favor?
Hi, hi.
Hi.
Okay, I's got it. Eileen, please open it to public.
The meeting will now be open to the public. If you are calling, you need to press star nine to raise or lower your hands and star six to mute and unmute yourselves. We're bringing in Daniel Blackmore.
Welcome, Daniel.
Hey, how's it going?
It's okay. Now, this is open for the applicant. Okay, you're of the applicant and, and, and comments can be made at the same time. Um, bottom line upfront, Mr. Bear is going to take your information before you ask any questions.
Yes, um, Mr., is it, it's sorry, Blackmore, Blackmore, I'm having trouble reading. Yeah. This Blackmore, can you please raise, raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please uh state your name and address for the record.
Daniel Blackmore, one twenty-seven Locust Ave, Howell, New Jersey.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Blackmore.
Yeah, so um, you know, this is mostly about the fence. I'm at one twenty-seventh right to the east of him. Um, you know, my survey showing the fence on his side of the property line um to me is true because all of the three properties have the same PVC fence and they're all flush. So according to his survey, it should pop out a couple of feet into my property and then cut back and it doesn't do that. And so if his is not doing that, then it's, it's not on, you know, it's not shown correctly on his survey. So and I don't want that to cause him to have to move this whole fence and pay for all that and do all that when, you know, he's just trying to have a nice time with his family back there. He's a great guy, you know.
Mr. Blackmore, you, you raised a uh, a very legitimate question. So does that mean that item A ten is defective? Charlie?
I mean, uh, so I'll just share very quickly. Uh I think the survey that was provided for the one twenty-seven Locust Avenue property, uh give me a second to find the share screen again here.
Daniel, please bear with us.
So I believe this is the survey. I think this is A number
Yeah.
or seven, one twenty-seven Locust Avenue. So I mean, I can't really tell the difference between the line work here. You know, this dimension for fence, you know, there's multiple fences that are coming into this corner here. To definitively say which one that fence is and, and where exactly it is in relation to which property corner, it's hard to say. I mean, on the applicant survey they provided, which is A number eight, it's a lot clearer as to what the location of the fence is shown. I, we'd have to go by the best available information that we have. You know, now if the applicant were to have their surveyor relook at this for their property to show that the fence is truly on their property, then that would be a different matter. But you know, like I said, at the scale and the line work that's here, I can't definitively tell you going by this that it's on the applicant's property. It's it's very hard to discern. Here, it's a lot clearer to discern where the location.
Right, and.
Is.
Yeah, that line has to be incorrect to me before all the neighbors, everyone's been allowed to put their fence on my property for years then.
That.
Because that is flush with the neighbors.
That could very well be true. I mean, you do have a big piece of property and, and your house is kind of located to the right of the screen. Um, but that's kind of what we're basing this on, on. Now, if the applicant, you know, once we get over the other issues that we, you know, have to deal with, which is the proximity of the patio, which is totally separate issue. If the applicant wants to have a different surveyor go out and do another survey and, and present it to us showing that the fence is on his exact property, that's one thing. But based upon this, it appears and it doesn't look like it's on your property by a lot. It's like a couple, maybe a foot, not even. Um, but.
Yeah, it's just impossible to me. Because the neighbor on, on the right, uh his, the neighbor to the right side, his property line, his fence is clearly on the other side. I am, I can walk onto his property line. So and, and Paul's is flush, so it has to be on his property.
Then I would say, well, the problem that we have is that this is a signed and sealed document by a professional land surveyor. So like this outweighs like people just walking around, unfortunately. So if he wants to go through the pains of getting another survey done to show that it's on his property, that's one thing, but based upon this, it shows that it is not.
Or what about an agreement from Mr. Blackmore to Mr. Vallejo? An easement or something giving him permission to have the fence on his side of the lot if that's the case.
Or license.
Or a license or some legal document, Mr. Blackmore, that would acknowledge what you're saying, you know, testifying to that you would, you think it's on, on your side, but if, but you would allow it if it's not either way, I think.
Right.
I mean, that's fine too. I just want to bring back to the board's attention that the application that we heard before this application last month, we made the guy move the fence. So in an attempt to be consistent with what we've made every other resident do, that's why I'm suggesting it.
Jen?
Unfortunately.
Everyone, here's what I'm thinking. Mr. Blackmore, you're telling me that we have a linear fence that starts from the corner behind your property or next to your, adjacent to your property, goes three lots over and it, it is basically in, you know, in line with one another.
Yeah, I have a screenshot. If you can see it, it's flush. Yeah, from above, I have a.
So, so what happens if it starts to go ahead and from the first lot and it moves over to the second lot and then it widens on the third? You know, that's the question. Is it this lot? Is this lot right here, is the fence on your property or is it on the applicant's property? And then what about the neighbor? Is the neighbor is partially on your property or is it all on their property? In other words, you know, this might be congregant with other app, other lots is what I'm saying.
Right.
So you know, I don't know how we want to legally rectify this. So, Mr. Bear?
Well, I, I don't, I agree with Jen. I mean, I mean, if you had to make it, if the board had to make a call, a judgment call on it, I don't know how you don't rely on the like the, a survey that's sealed, but I think the practical resolution is some sort of legal arrangement between the applicant and Mr. Blackmore, just showing the board that he'll agree to, to allow the encroachment if he is agreeable to it. That would that would be my suggestion.
Andy, what happens if the neighbor sells his property in maybe five years? Is that agreement still in effect or is that voided at that point?
Well, ideally, it would be recorded. So this way it would be, it would run with the land.
Okay, so the buyer would be aware of it and then they would buy, but okay.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Can I just ask, you're, you're a property owner of lot twelve or you rent?
Owner, yes.
Okay.
Uh, we moved in in twenty eighteen.
Okay. Want to make sure because I, you know, if you're not the owner, then it would be difficult to.
Yeah. And we just have our garden back there and we leave the trees, you know, it's our little preserve.
It's your preserve, sir. Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, ju- ju- just for my clarification on the screen that we're looking at now, is the property line thicker of the black lines and then the fence thinner one with the little points on it?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we have to we have to consider it all. Because if that's the case, Mr. Blackmore is saying that that thinner line actually is straight in line with the adjacent fence. So if we surveyed all of those lots, there's a good chance that whether it's an inch, two inches, that that fence line is straight, but it's drifting off of the survey line. Does that sound about right, Charlie? Or maybe this is improper.
Yeah, I mean, we have a licensed survey for the applicant's property that shows that it's not on the property line. You know, the concern that I have with any agreement, I know in, in towns, we've done it for when it's just a fence surrounding a property that may beander on two different property lines and things like that. The question I, I would just have for Andy and maybe John can shed some light on that too, is whether that, whether the added wrinkle of there being a swimming pool, whether that causes any issues from a liability perspective of it being on a, on another property, even if you have a, an easement from the neighboring property on it, whether that causes any issues for it. It's not just this, you know, a fence that encloses your backyard. It's also a swimming pool. And the fences are required so that, you know, kids aren't uh able to freely walk into your backyard and into your swimming pool. And God forbid, you know, something bad happens. That's the purpose of the building code with the fences for swimming pools. And God forbid, you know, something bad happens. That's the purpose of the building code with the fences for swimming pools.
Well, Charlie, isn't that factually accomplished, whether it's on Mr. Blackmore's side of the line or Mr. Vallejo's?
Yes, it's. It's an actual recorded easement and it's not just a agreement between the property owners, you know, uh. I've seen it where it's just a letter agreement from one property owner to another allowing the encroachment. As opposed to, uh, an actual recorded easement. I think that it would need to be the latter. Thank.
That's what I was proposing, but yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Mr. Blackmore. Um, let's ask the applicant, Mr. Oscealo.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
What are you thinking right now?
Um. I'm thinking, uh, that, uh, I should speak to the applicant. Well, number one, I think we should, um, carry this hearing. Uh, if it's okay with the board, um, I think we need to do some homework. I, um, I think, uh, Ms. Beam. Has raised some concerns, um, and if the fence is a concern for the board as well. Um, I think the applicant is going to have to figure out a solution. Um, so i- i- if it pleases the board, um, we'd like to carry this to to the next available.
All right, Mr. Oscealo, it's it's not just the fence, but it's also the drainage solution.
Understood, understood. Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Blackmore, do you have any more questions? We're still in public.
Oh, no, that's it, Mr.
Okay.
You know.
We we thank you for your questions, Mr. Blackmore.
Mr. Chair, if I, can I ask a question of Mr. Blackmore real quickly?
Yes, go ahead.
Since the applicant has installed his pool, have you noticed any additional runoff or any negative impacts to your property? As far as runoff, stormwater runoff?
No, definitely not. And you know, we have a lot of vegetation back there, kind of buffer and everything, too. But, uh, no, haven't seen anything, haven't had any flooding at all.
Okay.
Thank you, Charlie. Mr. Blackmore, if you don't have any more questions, we're gonna ask Eileen to, uh, see if there's any other. Members from public that would wish to speak on this application. Thank you.
Thanks.
Eileen, how are we looking?
Hold on. Stop sharing this. Nobody else?
Nobody else in the public.
Okay. For members of the public, um, you know, we're talking about. Case number BA twenty-two dash sixteen, Paul Vallejo. This is a bulk variance. May I have a motion to close the public, please?
Oh, sure.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So both professionals, um, you know, Mr. Oscealo. He's asking us to carry this application. Uh, is there anything further that any of you have, Mr. Oscealo, before we set a new date?
I don't.
The only comment that I have is they need to rectify the potential drainage runoff on the northerly property line. We've heard from the property owner to the east, not necessarily being concerned and not having any impact, but, uh. The northerly, I think, is, uh, still needs to be looked into further and come up with some, uh, uh, way to, uh, ameliorate that.
Okay, thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, Mr. Kullis.
So, Ms. Oscealo, Eileen, what are we looking at as far as dates?
Uh, the next available I have is March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Um, I'm not sure if, uh, we'd be able to come up with a solution by then. Do you have anything available in April?
I have April tenth or I have. April twenty-fourth.
Uh, I think we'd probably be able to do, uh, April twen- uh, tenth, uh, but if not, I will. I'll let you know, uh, if there's an issue, uh, but but we can be pretty certain that we can do April tenth, if if that's okay with the board.
That works. Okay, what do we need, Eileen?
Well, you would, I'm sorry, go ahead, Eileen.
Um, we might need an extension of time, but, uh. Because right now it expires March sixteenth.
Right, okay, so, Mr. Oscealo, we're gonna give you to thirty April. Does that work?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair, thank you.
And the and the application is being carried to April tenth. Eileen, do we have to?
That's correct.
Any further notice, Eileen?
With no further notice.
No further notice. Okay, for everyone in the public. You know, application BA twenty-two dash sixteen, Paul Vallejo. This application is being carried to eight ten April twenty twenty-three with an expiration of thirty April twenty twenty-three with no further notice. Thank you, Mr. Oscealo. Thank you, Mr. Vallejo.
Thank you.
John?
Thank you.
Thank you. Blackmore, Mr. Blackmore can be moved over to public. Okay. John, once you're clear, Mr. Oscealo and Mr. Vallejo, I'll announce the next application. Okay, how's everyone doing? Case number BA nineteen dash eleven, Sierra Papa, K ten Holdings LLC. Preliminary and final major site plan with bulk variance. Description, application of K ten Holdings LLC as applicant and owner seeking preliminary. And final major site plan approval on premises known as block forty-one, lot twenty-six dot oh two. Four thirteen Oak Glen Road. This applicant was previously before the zoning board on in twenty twenty. And received a bifurcated use variance approval to construct four new multi-tenant warehouse structures. In two phases with office space, concrete walkways, septic fields, stormwater management basins. The property is currently developed and contains four buildings, including a one and a half story single-family dwelling. A one-story garage office building, a one-story frame building, and a one-story metal ship, metal building. All occupied by mid-state heating and cooling. The applicant has provided New Jersey DEP LOI. Which indicates that no freshwater wetlands nor any part of the transition buffer are present. The expiration date is five May twenty twenty-three. Mr. Alfieri?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Salvatore Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant. Um, as the board chairman indicated, this prop- uh, property has received bifurcated D variance approval in July of twenty twenty. Uh, the property is split zoned, about forty percent of the properties in the AR six, AREE six zone and about sixty percent in the SED zone. We had several D use variance hearings and during the course of those hearings, it was finally, um. Designed in such a way that all of the buildings are in the SED zone, no buildings are in the AREE six zones. Um, the use variance, uh, had many conditions that relate that are actually. Uh, summarized in Charlie's letter dated January fifth on page three, including no retail sales and and et cetera. There are many other conditions. The applicant understands that those conditions would continue through site plan approval if we if we do receive approval tonight. Um, the only new variance that that I'm aware of is the number of signs because we have multiple tenants. But we'll, our architect will discuss that when when he is called up. Um, and we have several witnesses. Uh, we have many witnesses present or participating, but we probably will not call them. Unless board, the board members have specific questions for them. We really only intend to have our engineer. Architect and then planner to justify the one variance. And Anthony Mal- Maltese is our engineer, I'm assuming. He's on, and I lean on it and ask that he be allowed to enter.
One minute.
Mr. Aggyar?
I didn't hear you, Mr. Chair.
No, I'm asking Mr. Aggyar, you have interest in this property? John? Do you have any open? Tickets on this property?
I do not.
Okay, thank you.
I see Mr. Maltese is on. Anthony, you're muted. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Bear, we're gonna ask that this is all, this is a separate application, so we do need to re swear and qualify all the experts as they come up.
Okay. You want, are you starting with Mr. Maltese?
Yes, please.
Okay, Mr. Maltese, please raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
And please state your name for the record, spell your last.
Anthony Maltese. My last name is M A L T E S E.
Thank you, Mr. Maltese. Uh, advisor board, who you're employed by, and then please place your credentials on the record. We're seeking to have you qualified as a pre- professional engineer.
Yes, um, I'm currently with Abington Engineering. Uh, I'm licensed in New Jersey, Pennsylvania as a professional engineer. Um, I went to school at Hof University, got my bachelor's degree in in, uh, engineering. And I've appeared in front of many boards, zoning and planning, um. Howell, Freehold, uh, currently the borough engineer of, uh, Freehold. Um, Point Pleasant Beach, Point Pleasant Borough, Neptune and Millstone in the areas.
Mr. Maltese, you're a civil or a profession?
Civil.
Thank you. We accept your credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, Anthony, can you generally, and and do you need, you want to put up your site plan? Or you want to have whoever's moderating put up the site plan sheet?
Sure, um, Charlie, you want to bring up the site plan or is it easier for me to bring it up?
I can bring it up. Do you have a particular page you're looking to show?
Um, I guess we can run through, uh, Mr. Kullis' report, uh, bring up, let's see. Grab sheet ready to start the overall site plan. So the the major changes from, um, when when this was bifurcated. Uh, at the last meeting, we had originally had septic systems servicing the buildings. Uh, we have changed that to gravity flow system out to Oakland Road. Uh, to the south. Uh, we also had originally planned for two detention basins. And we broke them up into four separate detention basins now. Um, so that's the the major change. We brought the the buildings into the SED zone. That was the other adjustment. Um. So.
Can you just, when you say, um, gravity, so so the septics are eliminated and we now will have, uh, public, uh, sanitary sewer connection for all the buildings. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, can you, can you describe for the board how the stormwater management will work? I know you discussed enough for basins, but you could, can you describe a little more detail how it would operate?
Uh, turn to sheet. I'm looking at sheet number six, please. Okay, so maybe we should go to seven. Let's start, let's start to the rear of the property. So all the property, uh, topography. The stormwater naturally flows to the front of property, which is to the west. Uh, we have behind all loading docks, we have trench drain systems in place with pumps, some pumps. And Charles, he brought in, uh, in his report, he mentioned that the inverts. Were lower than, um. Than the bottom of the basin going into the into the basins. And unfortunately, we had to put these pumps in. Otherwise, we'd have to raise the entire back of the property pretty significantly to make gravity flow work. Uh, there was one building that I can remove the, uh, some pump and make that gravity flow. It's, it's building. Building B to the west side, I can make that adjustment. The other buildings, we we just can't make the grades work. Um, so the rear of the property here, everything on the on on the pavement goes into a storm sewer conveyance system. And then you go to sheet five, it'll enter into the first detention system. Which is basin number. Basin number one. From basin number one, it's it's bypassed, uh, into a gravity flow system out to Oakland Road. Additional drainage is is accounted for into basin number three, which is just to the north of that basin. And that also connects to the the conveyance system to Oakland Road. Um. And basin number two in the front. Is also is collecting all the stormwater from behind building A and around building A. Through the existing structure. Oh, I'm sorry, the existing structure, all the stormwater from that area is going to basin number. Uh, four. So everything is is being collected through these four basins and and it is. Is discharging at its, uh, peak level to Oakland Road down, um, down to the crossing.
These these basins will be owned and maintained by the property owner, is that correct?
That's correct.
And and Mr. Kullis does have several pages of, uh, and I know you addressed many of them, but there's still some open comments. And or recommendations about stormwater management. Are you prepared, other than what you just described about the pumps? Are you prepared to address all of those comments to his satisfaction?
Yes, I am. And he did make, uh, one comment along Oakland Road about being, you know, it's relatively flat. And he was, he was requesting maybe the potential of putting some storm inlets in along the roadway there. Uh, we have no problem doing that. It's extra, uh, maintenance on, you know, on Howell. Uh, the reason we kept it there is that. Well, right now the existing flow kind of goes into the buffer area where the wooded area is. And we we feel that it would be fine to leave it the way it is. Um.
That and that's a, that that's the comment on page seven, paragraph number ten, where, uh, Charlie suggests that the board discuss. Uh, manholes along the property frontage.
Yes. So we, the the pipe would have to probably in- uh, increase for capacity. Uh, increase in size and then we would have to put inlets along the way. But we feel that the storm where that's that's currently flowing in that area can easily go into that buffer area. And drain off the side of the road as it does today.
Okay, so we can leave that to the board to discuss when they're ready. Can you discuss also now for us the, um. Lighting and landscaping, site lighting and site landscaping, please?
Yes, in regards to the site lighting, uh, we're okay to to address and comply with all the comments. Um, we're willing to go down to the half a foot handle as requested. Instead of the average that we have, I believe it's one point eight. We're willing to go down to the half a foot handle as requested, instead of the average that we have, I believe it's 1.8.
So the, the, the waiver that's referenced in both Jennifer and Charlie's report regarding the, the, uh, the lighting. Will not be requested, and we will comply with the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
And then Mr. Conliff also requested, uh, he had asked if the applicant was planning on putting any lighting in, in the rear of the buildings. For, um, those three northerly buildings, or I'm sorry, easterly buildings. And I would say that the applicant will put sensors out there because there's landings out there. So sensors and potential timers if they want to put lighting, uh, but they would have to be shielded, but we're not showing any lighting right now. But I would assume that there's going to be sensors there, so when they walk out of there at night, the light goes on.
There's, um, there was a comment that the chairman raised, uh, from the prior approval, or maybe in the meeting summary about phasing. But the applicant in its most recent submission indicate that the property would be developed in one phase?
That's correct, and we noted that on the plan. It'll be one phase project.
And also there was a reference to the, um, the LOI. The LOI had originally expired, and I believe you now have an extension. Can you just briefly explain the, the nature of that extension and how long it's good for?
Yes. But, let's get to that page here. Yes, it was extended to November 20th, 2026. And I know there was a question of wildlife and habitat as well on this, and, you know, typically, when you go for an LOI. Uh, they would bring up whether there's endangered species, species or not. And in this particular case, there were none from our site visit and the D P not actually telling us there is.
Uh, the fire official issued a report, the latest one I have is July of 2022, which they had no objection to the progress project. And fire lanes had to be consult, um, drawn or installed in consultation with the fire bureau. And one of the earlier comments had, commented on the number of hydrants, but you now provide three hydrants, is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and the fire official, um, has no other comments. There is a reference in one of the reports about title 39 jurisdiction, the board should discuss that. The applicant has no issue granting the board or the township title 39 jurisdiction if that were imposed as a condition of approval. Um, also, we mentioned the sanitary sewer, that will require several layers of approval, uh, from outside agencies. So the applicant prepared to obtain all those approvals?
Yes, they are.
Can you also, can you also discuss the refuse, how, where it's going to be located, and how it's going to be, um, enclosed?
Uh, there's several trash enclosures on the site, uh, I guess we can. Let me see if it's Johnny. We can go to sheet number four, please. If you look at, zoom into, uh, building A. To the, to the north of the building, you'll see there's two trash enclosures. And then. In front of the rest of the buildings, building B, and so on, we have multiple trash enclosures. For each, for each building, and it was about, was it four or five?
They're existing today?
No, they're proposed. Those are proposed, sir. And we have two per, two per building.
How are they enclosed?
I believe we're doing a, um, masonry. It's going through the masonry block.
Okay, um, there, uh. There are waivers associated with private walkways and, and the sidewalks that are referenced in the reports. Are we seeking, uh, waivers from the installation of sidewalks on the main road and then internally to, to connect to the road?
Yes, we are.
Um, and if there's a, if there's a, uh, payment in lieu of installation of sidewalks, the applicant would, would agree to pay, uh, the cost per the ordinance?
Yes.
Um, Shari from CME issued a report dated December 22nd relating to, um, landscaping and plantings. Um, are you prepared to address all of those comments?
Yeah, yes, we are.
Uh, in addition, um. Not getting into any more level of detail, but I mentioned the T N M report dated January 5th, and then, um, we have the planners report from Jennifer dated January 10th. Um, I'm forgetting, and not commenting on architecture, of course, we'll get to that. But with separate exhibit, are you prepared to address all of the technical comments that we haven't covered so far in either of those reports?
Yes, we are.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair, Mr. Maltese.
Mr. Alfieri, that's, um, quite, uh, quite an advancement from the last time we met.
Yes, well, you beat us up for several meetings, Mr. Chair.
So Charlie, talk to us. You got storm, we got sewer?
Yes.
Gravity fed, excuse me, you got sewer, gravity fed, you got storm water, that's going to be pumped and then gravity fed. What else?
Yeah, so and just to clarify, so when the site came in for the, for the, um. Uh, use variance approval, there was septic systems proposed at the rear, uh, the north side of these buildings, I think it's B through D. And there was another septic system proposed for this building A that also serviced the existing office. Uh, obviously, uh, when this application first came in, they were under the old stormwater management rules, which had a little different, um. Requirements as far as like green infrastructure and infiltration. Uh, fortunately, the applicant filed after the new rules came into effect, so there's contributory drainage area limits. Everything's got to be green infrastructure, having those right next to, um, septic systems obviously, uh, doesn't always work out. So that's why the applicant went and, and went the route of, uh, going into hook into public sewer. Um. We had various iterations going back and forth of Mr. Maltese regarding the stormwater management. Um, I'm confident from, from my perspective, as far as stormwater management, the lingering comments that are in my letter are just, uh. You know, dotting the Ts, uh, sorry, crossing the Ts, dotting the Is kind of thing. Uh, the one question that I just wanted Mr. Maltese to discuss with the board is. Um, all the site stormwater runoff is captured by stormwater conveyance within the site. Uh, and then obviously attenuated, uh, with the various stormwater basins that are on the property. And then, um, instead of just daylighting or discharging it to Oakland Road, which is relatively flat, as Mr. Maltese pointed out. There's an existing conveyance system, uh, north of the site, uh, like a drainage crossing that discharges to a ditch. Mr. Maltese, can you talk about that, where that discharges to?
You mean going downstream?
Yes, exactly.
So around Oakland Road, there's multiple crossings, uh, in this area. And everything flows to the west, down, down little streams or trenches going through a stream. Um, and that's where we're, we're basically discharging to, the existing conditions are where everything drains to.
And, uh, in your opinion, there's no adverse impact to any of the properties downstream, right? So it's, it's a staple ditch, uh, that's got a sufficient height, and it's all going to drain and not flow onto neighboring properties, it's just going to stay in that ditch?
That's correct. And, and you, and you did have a, a comment about the elliptical pipe being, seeming to be, uh, larger than what you expected. It was, it's larger for capacity purposes because of the slope of how flat it is, and that's why we had to increase the size.
Okay, and that also takes some adjacent already offsite area that currently flows to that crossing in the existing condition, correct, from the properties to the north?
Yes.
So, and then, uh, there was a mention about the various loading docks. Those are drop loading docks, right, where the trailer actually goes downgrade, so that way it's flush with, uh, the door of the building and everything can kind of just be loaded right off the truck into the building?
That's correct.
And so if that were to, under a significant storm event, hold water, uh, if the pump fails. That's all contained on the applicant site. There's no way for that to overflow onto a neighboring property, right? It would first overflow into your own conveyance system into your stormwater basins?
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay. Um, that is all I have for the moment, Mr. Sam. My computer just froze on me, so I can't scroll through my, uh, review letter, um.
All right, Charlie, well, we'll give you, we'll give you a chance to take a deep breath.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll, we'll go to, we'll go to Jen. Jen?
So I just have a couple things, um. I know you talked about the number of the enclosures, and they're going to be handled by a private hauler. Do you have any idea of the frequency of the pickups?
That I can't speak upon it. We have to speak with, uh, the applicant on that.
So is that obviously going to be dependent on tenants? Do you have tenants?
And we only have the owner who's going to occupy one of the buildings, um, primarily warehouse space, but other than that, they haven't even marketed it for rental, so. We don't, we're not sure of the frequency.
But it is going to be handled by private haulers, so in the event that you get a tenant in there that needs more frequent pickup, it's something that you could address?
Yes.
Um, and then the only other thing, uh, in my letter, and they did touch on it, was the waiver for sidewalks. I would defer to the board. You know, there is, there really are no sidewalks in this area, um. So, you know, typically, I'm, I'm a big advocate of pushing for them, but in this particular instance, I don't necessarily know that it would be beneficial. It might be more beneficial to accept the payment in lieu, and the township can use the money in an area where we actually have an opportunity to create some sidewalk connectivity. But again, I would leave it up to the board.
Got it, Jen. Um.
What else you have, Jen?
That's all I have. Are you, so you have someone that's going to talk about signs, right?
Yes.
I do want to make, I'm sorry, I do want to make a quick comment, um. So at the, at our last meeting, there was some concern with a neighbor across the street, and he was worried about headlights coming in and out of the site onto his property. Um. We've been there recently. I was actually there last week. There's a new house being constructed across the street. And we took a measurement from the proposed, the northerly side of the proposed access drive. And it is 80 feet, the, the corner of the house is 80 feet away from the proposed access drive, so. Um, there, there won't be a concern with, um, headlights facing into someone's house. I just wanted to put down the record.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mark.
Uh, Cantor, in, in that regard, um, if, if I remember correctly, the driveway was actually moved to accommodate that neighbor, correct?
Yes, it was.
All right, so this is north of Lanes Pond. Lanes Pond Road on Oakland. Correct, Charlie?
Yes, that's correct, oh.
Yeah, the, the property to the south is, I believe it's U S Foods, uh, warehouse facility that's been there for a number of, number of years, um. And, and then just to, to clarify, uh, a couple of comments Mr. Maltese made. Um, and again, I'm, I'm kind of flying blind here. My, I can hear you guys, but I can't see anything, and my fridge screen's frozen, so I'm going from, uh, my notes and memory as best as I can right here. But, um, the drainage system along the frontage of the property, uh, that ties into that drainage crossing. Um, there's a, a series of manholes. I, I think it very easily, those could be converted to E inlets to pick up some of the drainage from the road, as Mr. Maltese noted, it's flat. I did want to bring up for the board's discussion again, and, and we talked about this as part of the use variance, and it kind of got pushed off to the site plan, which is where we're at right now. Um, about widening the roadway across the frontage, putting in col, uh, curbing and a shoulder. Um, uh, we kind of pushed that off to the site plan the first time around, because the neighbor across the street was concerned about widening it to an eight-foot shoulder. And then potentially, you know, people using that as an additional parking area on the side of the street. Um. I don't know that they need to widen it to eight feet, but I think that they could widen the shoulder, uh, a little bit, uh, just to give, because those lanes in this part of, part of Howe. Are, you know, maybe 11 foot with a one-foot shoulder, if you're lucky. Um, they are putting a drainage line across the frontage there, so they are going to need to get, um, you know, some road opening permits from the township. Uh, I would ask that that be, uh, you know, be revisited at, uh, time of like, uh, road opening permit and finalizing the plans for any right-of-way improvements. Is that something Sally Appicant would be amenable to?
Yeah, we would, we would do that through the, um, the in-house township engineer, I'm assuming, or through your office?
Uh, usually in conjunction. The road opening permit gets filed through the engineering department, but they will ask us to review it. Um, we tried to keep in mind any planned roadway improvements that they have, whether it be drainage and things of that nature. Um, or any other planned improvements that they have, just to make sure that it, uh, you know, ties in seamlessly with any projects they have on the horizon.
And then Charlie?
Yep.
We also talked about maybe striping it, and that's where title 39 came in?
Yeah, so obviously, everything on the site, drive aisles, it's going to have to be striped as fire lanes, no parking with signage, uh, satisfactory to the fire official. And then that way, uh, with title 39, the, you know, PD could then enforce, um. Um, you know, parking restrictions on the site. If someone's parking in a fire lane, they can issue a ticket, things of that nature. Um, along the roadway, like I said, as long as the shoulder is in a full eight-foot wide, you know, I don't think you're going to have the issue with, uh. People, you know, parking off the edge of the road, curbing, I think, would, uh, also stop people from parking in the grassed area, if that's a concern from the board. Um, having said that, then, uh, you know, you run the risk where it's flat of, uh, ponding water on the edge of the road. So I think it can be widened not to a fully foot, but somewhere in between, just to give some more, um, safety, especially if there's going to be additional. Um. SU 30-size trucks intermittently coming out of the site, so people can pass as needed kind of thing, or, uh, pull off to the edge as needed.
Makes sense.
Suggesting curb? I'm sorry, are you suggesting curb along Oakland?
No, not at, not at this time. I think, uh, converting, Anthony, converting those manholes to like an E inlet, and maybe adding an additional one, so that way, uh. The road, the water can rain off the road into the, into the grassed area, and then, you know, make its way into these inlets.
So we, we, that will cause increase probably in, in the size of the pipe, and also increase additional flow into, uh, downstream. Um, it shouldn't be a problem, but just keep in mind, it's more maintenance for the town, uh, instead of just going off into the buffer area. Because that buffer area is going to stay there, and nothing's going to be done to it.
Yeah, we can, we can take a look at that, uh, further. It would be my, uh, recommendation that, that we, we go that route, um. Like I said, you don't have a significant contributory drainage area on Oakland Road there. I think you've got a high point south of your driveway, and then it starts pitching down to Lanes Pond Road. And then everything north of your site pitches to that, uh, and that's, we're not talking about acreage of, of, we're talking about nuisance ponding. Along the frontage.
That's fine.
Are you back, Charlie?
Um, I can hear you all, I'm just frozen, so. Just, I might get kicked off the call and have to restart and pop back in. I'll, uh, I'll shoot a text if that happens, I apologize.
All right, if we have to take five, we can. Mr. Cantor, you got any questions? No. Okay, thank you. Mr. Rebel?
Uh, no questions for me.
I thought you would find it interesting. All right, uh, Mr. Rusko?
So far so good.
Yeah.
Mr. Ryan?
No questions.
All right, Mr. Barilla?
No questions.
Okay, um, and of course. Vice Chair?
I'm good at this point. I may have some questions down the road.
Very good, sir, thank you. Okay, so. Charlie, why don't you reboot? And, uh, and Eileen will take five, right?
The meeting will take a five-minute break. It will reconvene at 8:36 PM.
Thank you, Eileen.
The meeting will now reconvene.
Charlie, you're back?
Yes, I'm back.
Okay, so before we, uh, we move on. I'm hoping you can go through and clarify some more with Mr. Maltese.
Yeah, so, um, I wanted to touch on it when he was talking about the lighting, um.
Let, let him get back into the room here. Okay, Charlie, go ahead.
Yeah, so the site lighting, uh, obviously the applicant indicated that they were going to revise all the site lighting to comply with the maximum average of a half foot candle. Um, I think that's fine. I'll just note for the boys reference that, uh, we have granted that waiver on numerous commercial applications in the past. Uh, we've made the recommendation as part of the rules committee about, um, amending the lighting ordinance to be, you know, up to current lighting standards and modernization with LED. So, uh, I wouldn't have taken an exception to it from that perspective. Uh, but regarding the security lighting on the back, the rear, the north sides of buildings, B through D. I just asked that, um, Mr. Maltese put on the record, it's going to be downward facing. Uh, it's going to be on timers, it shuts off after, or timers or motion sensors and will shut off thereafter. Is that something that's going to be on all nights of the uh, hours of the night, especially since those properties to the north are existing residential properties? And I really didn't have much more. There was a very lengthy process uh, with the stormer management review because like I said, this came in under the new rules, whereas the use was under the old rules. So there was a lot of things as far as, uh, they had grass bottom detention basins with low flow channels. You can no longer do that. So unfortunately they had to do a lot of changes to the site in the stormer management basins. They worked through most of that to my satisfaction. So, uh, you know, that's something that I always put a particular emphasis on and I'm, I think we're, we're in a good position from that perspective, but, uh, that's, that's really all I have from, uh, from a site layout.
Thank you, Charlie.
And so Anthony, would you confirm that those rear, um, security lighting will be downward? Will we orient it downward and on timers and or motion sensors?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to make sure it was on the record. They do need a request, a waiver to pay into the tree fund. Um, also it looks like they need a waiver for the, um, foundation plantings.
That's correct.
Thank you, Ms. Barrow. Jen, you're good?
Yeah, the only other thing I have in my letter is the signage and I think the architect is going to discuss that.
We're going to get to that shortly. Okay. Mr. Agar, go ahead.
Uh, just a quick question for Charlie. Uh, you had mentioned road widening and the creation of a shoulder, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So just so you're aware, we have received in the past complaints from tractor trailers parking near the United site. Uh, apparently they're they're restricted with regards to hours of operations. Uh, what I, I wouldn't want to see happen is that there now becomes a parking lot along Oakland Road. Uh, some of the truck drivers, you know, obviously just trying to time their deliveries. Sometimes get there a little bit early, um, and start using Oakland Road as a, as a park lot. I don't have any jurisdiction out in the street and unfortunately because of, uh, lack of any signage or any ordinance that would prohibit parking along Oakland Road. That's become, uh, somewhat of a parking lot at times. So I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going to create that same situation on this site where we have uh, trucks parking on the shoulder or in a grass area waiting to come into the site, although I don't believe there are any uh, site restrictions with as far as time. Am I correct in that assumption?
So there, there, I believe the applicant did put some restrictions as part of the use variance on like days and hours of operation and things like that. I think, um, uh, my suggestion wasn't for like a full eight foot wide shoulder with curbing where, you know, you could have queuing of like vehicles along the frontage of the property to do loading and unloading. My more so was from the traffic safety perspective. We have a lot of these rural roads with like a ten foot lane and a six inch shoulder if you're lucky. Winding it up. So we have maybe an eleven foot lane and like a foot or two foot shoulder just for traffic safety purposes. So, uh, you know, if someone's going a little bit faster than the speed limit, uh, they're not catching a lip on the edge and, you know, uh, driving off the edge of the road kind of thing. So, and, and, and I don't well, I would normally recommend, uh, curbing along the frontages. I think for this type of application, it would be a little bit out of the character for the, the neighborhood. And then also when you put the curbing, you know, especially with various flat slopes on the property frontage, you run the issue of like exacerbating those drainage issues. So I think Ian lets in place of the manholes, just to alleviate some of that localized ponding. It would be the preferred, uh, preferred option here.
I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Alfary. We, um, uh, have our board members. No one has any questions for you at this time and the professionals seem to be uh, happy to move forward here. So, um, who are we bringing in next?
Right. So Eileen, I'd like to request that David is Deladonna. I don't know if I said it right, but we'll find out in a moment. Be let in. He's our architect, Mr. Chair.
He's coming in the meeting.
I see him. David. You're muted. Now you're not.
Now I'm not.
Turn on your camera, sir.
So David first, how do you pronounce your last name?
It's Deladonna.
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 Okay.
Yes, sir.
We're going to request you, um, uh, Andy, would you swear David in please?
Yes, Mr. Deladonna, please raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Please state your name for the record. Spell your last.
Sure. It's David Deladonna, last name capital D E L L E, capital D O N N E.
We're seeking to have you qualified as a licensed architect. Would you place your credentials on the record, please?
Sure, I'm a graduate of Penn State University, uh, with a degree in Bachelor of Architecture. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey and have been for the last, uh, twenty-five years or more. Uh, I've done numerous testimonies before various planning boards or what, what a board of adjustments, et cetera, through up and down the state. But never before howl. So this is a first for me.
Welcome, Mr. Deladonna. It's, uh, it's a pleasure and, um, you know, you're, we accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you very much.
And David, you're, you're affiliated with the Deets organization, right, correct?
Yes, I'm a, I'm a partner as well as an architect licensed with the Deets partnership. Um, Chuck Deets is the managing partner and he, um, for, you know, provided prior testimony, I believe, or, or provided other, the plans that were submitted, but unfortunately he had a, uh, personal matter that he had to tend to. So I'm here on behalf of the company. I am familiar with the project.
And, and I, and we submitted, uh, through your office colored renderings prior to the hearing. Charlie, I don't know if you have those, if not David does.
Yeah, I don't know if I have those, Sal.
Okay. So David, we should, and I'm not sure if they were pre-marked by Eileen, but if not, we'll mark them tonight. David, you want to share your screen or?
Sure, yeah, I mean, just find the right button. Okay. So the rendering you are looking at is, was prepared?
We're going to, and I'm not sure where we were, uh, pre-marked exhibit.
Yeah.
So I don't know what.
Sal, I, I see in the package B twenty-nine, which looks like what you're showing. Well, the first, it's only one page though, but.
This, this is only one page.
Okay.
That's B twenty-nine?
Yeah, B is in boy, yeah.
Okay, thank, thank you. All right, David, go ahead. I'm sorry.
All right. So primarily this is, uh, showing the um, architecture of the buildings that are intended. Uh, this is showing, uh, building A. But the intention is for building B, C and D to take on all the characteristics of the, of this, what you're seeing in the rendering. Um, each of the buildings will have the corners emphasized as well as the entrances emphasized. The buildings will be a precast building. Um, but the pre, the concrete structure of the exterior of the building will be painted with field colors, accent colors, as well as textures, both in terms of accent paintings. Um, and a textured, essentially a wood look uh, on the pilasters that you're seeing. I think, but, oh yeah. So entrances being highlighted here on each of the buildings by a dark color. The fields, the lighter color with striping up on the corners and at the band above the storefronts. And then to break up the architecture to meet the articulation ordinances that are, uh, in place. Uh, we've broken up the corners as well as the, the linearity of each of the buildings with uh, these bump ads, bump ups that articulate three feet above and three feet out in terms of projection. But the coloring of them and the texturing of them, uh, mimics essentially a wood siding. That was the the, the attempt of what we're showing here. Uh, and again, it gets broken up from the field to another dark band and then you hit the corner. Um, in this particular building being building A, we are showing a piece of signage on this particular pilaster. Uh, but on the B, C and D buildings, we're indicating uh, signage would go above the doors or to mark the entrances of the warehouse spaces. Uh, so again, the, the coloring and the variations, um, you know, we thought was architecturally pleasing as well as meeting the intention of the ordinance for the articulations, both in terms of height and in terms of plan.
Um, will there be roof mounted, um, HVAC or units of any type?
There will be, yes. And, uh, the intention right now, uh, as long as the roof structure allows it is for the power pits to screen those, those units.
And in terms of, uh, uh, signage, the building mounted signs we're proposing, uh, a total of, I believe nine or ten. I'm just looking at my notes now. I had ten written down, but it might be nine, but those signs, the multiple nu- number of signs are required because of the multiple tenants. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes, they are. If I, I think I can bring up on the same screen. Can, can everybody see this?
Yes.
Okay. So this is essentially a plan, a piece of the plan of building B and the front elevation of building B. Uh, and just to discuss the signage. Again, the articulation of the pieces marking the entrances and the breakup of the facades. But each of the signage is placed over the entrances. In this particular building, you have three entrances that are, are, um, split from the overall square footages. Um, these signages currently are, uh, cabinet signs. Um, they are internally illuminated. They're essentially four foot high within, with letters across the facade of it. And they're twenty foot wide. So they each total eighty square feet.
Okay. And then, um, are these buildings required to be sprinkled under the building code?
Um, depending upon the usage, they might not be required to be sprinkled, but they are intended to be required. Uh, they are expected by our office to be, uh, by the owners and our office to be sprinkled. So the intention is, and I think we've articulated that So the intention is, and I think we've articulated that. There will be some type of sprinkler room and some type of electrical room in all the buildings. And, um, the intention would be for the water and the electric to come into those. And the sprinkler riser would then feed to the roof, uh, as required by code.
Okay, um, that's really all I have of the architect. I mean.
Sal, are, are the, what is what we're looking at? A twenty-two architectural plans or something else?
Yeah, my, my apologies. So the, this second piece that I brought up are the four sheets, A one through A two. I'm sorry, A one through A four. Uh, these were also submitted. Uh, the plans and architecture elevations for each of the four buildings. So they, these should also have been submitted.
Yeah, that was one of the earlier submissions, correct? The, the only late submission was the color rendering of the architecture.
That's my understanding, yes. So you.
I'm sorry. On the list is something A twenty-two architectural plans prepared by Deets. This component of that or something else?
It should be the same thing, yes.
And, and I know Jennifer had some comments about the articulation, uh, breaking it up to comply with the ordinance. So we would defer to Jennifer if we've had it. We address that.
Yes, uh, in looking at our, uh, January tenth letter, we have identified all the architectural, um. Comments have been met by the revisions in the architecture. So we, we, um. Don't see the need for any relief from the architectural requirements, which is very unusual. Um, and you know, understanding that there are a number of buildings associated with this app, application for to be exact. Uh, and, and typically. If the building is not on Route nine or thirty-three and it's not on a corner, it's allowed to have one. Uh, facade sign in this particular instance, given the nature of the, of the user, and it's more like flex space. I mean, uh, I'm taking the fact that, you know, building A has two wall signs, building B has three wall signs proposed. C and D have two each. Uh, I'm assuming that you're anticipating nine tenants at this site?
Potentially, yes.
That's right.
Is there, there's a commitment that there'll be no more than nine, correct?
Yeah, because we have to maintain, I think, a five thousand square feet minimum per. Yes.
In theory, if there were less, there would be less than, than the nine facade signs than you're requesting, correct?
Yes.
So it's a maximum of nine facade signs and one site identification sign.
That's correct.
That's correct.
So Mr. Chair, I don't take exception to the relief that they've asked for the signage, um, understanding to the nature of the site. The buildings go back kind of perpendicular to the road, um. So therefore, you know, a, a passerby is not going to see nine wall signs. So. Um, and I think that they've been strategically located on the architecture so as to create, um, a minimal negative visual environment. So. Um, you know, we would take no exception to the relief request for the signage. And that's really all I have.
And that's all we have for the architect, Mr. Chair. Dave, you stunned them into silence, it seems.
Uh, Paul's missing. Paul's missing in action.
I think we lost Paul.
Let's take a look and see.
I didn't do it.
I think I see him in the back of Nick's beach back there.
Do we want to give him a minute to come back in?
See if we can raise him on the text.
Good idea, Matt, because I remember that you, you were my link to get back in here.
Yeah.
Uh, members of the board, I just got a text from Paul. He's trying to reboot. So instead of interrupting, he asked if we just can move along. So I do not know, um, Eileen or maybe Jen, can you tell me who the next, uh, we have any more testimony?
So Sal, do you have any more witnesses?
We do not.
Okay, well.
I'm sorry, just one thing. Mr. Moltisi, uh, requested that he be, that he. He has a color rendering that he wanted to show the board that he neglected to do. Do that so we can let him at least show you the color rendering of the site plan.
Yeah, I mean, this would be a great time to do that. So let's do that.
So I could actually show that I have it up. I don't know if it's more convenient.
Either way, but Anthony should, uh, unmute himself so he can describe. But go ahead, David, you can put it up.
Okay.
And Anthony, this was, this was.
Is this unmarked, Sal?
No, I believe, I'm pretty sure it was submitted in advance. So I don't have the exhibit list, so I don't know what it was marked as.
Yes, it, it was submitted in time and, um. We, we just wanted the board to see, uh, how it looked, uh, rendered. Um, just to get a better visual on it. Cause there was a lot of things going on in the actual plan, a lot of line work. So. This is just a visual, a better visual.
And Mr. Murray, just to clarify, I think this is B twenty-eight, exhibit B twenty-eight.
Okay.
So rendering, yep, so rendering prepared by Aventi engineer dated October twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. Is the blue dotted line right in the middle, the depth, the separation between the two zones?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And that, that concludes all of our testimony. Um, so we have, we have other witnesses in case questions come up that. Are outside the scope of the disciplines of the two witnesses we presented, but otherwise we don't intend to call any other witnesses.
Okay, well, they'll be by, they'll be standing by in case we do have public comment. They'll have some questions, I'm sure.
That's correct.
Um, while we're waiting for Mr. Sayah to get back on, um, Andy, I have more of a legal question for you because it may. Eliminate some of the public comments. Um. John, who, uh, is our code enforcer testified that there is more traffic on Oakland Road. That cannot be considered as a factor for any decision we make or going forward.
In, at during the use variance, he said that.
No, 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 we're, you know, we, we already went through the use. I'm just saying because we're looking at new testimony, this is the final site. So I'm just wondering if that has any, um, connect. Well, I'm just trying to eliminate. Having a lot of people calling up and asking about the traffic now being a problem. Is that anything that we, we have no really jurisdiction over what's going on down the street?
Right. The, the site plan, the, the plan that we're looking at tonight is consistent with what. I realize this is the bifurcate application, but this is generally consistent with what was presented. At the use, I wasn't here.
But it is, Andy, it is consistent with what was approved with the use variance.
Yeah.
Okay. So any additional testimony from John, we cannot really consider. Any, okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
We did have a traffic engineer at the original. Use variance hearing.
Yes, we did.
We did, and to add clarity, I think Mr. Aguirre's comments were regarding the property to the south and it wasn't. Necessarily additional traffic generated from the site, but the queuing of trucks on the frontage of Oakland Road across the frontage. Uh, you know, causing an issue for traffic. Was that right, John?
That's correct. Uh, I didn't say that there was additional traffic. I just wanted to make sure that. According to what's being presented here tonight, that there wasn't the ability of trucks to park along the side of the road. I did, by widening the roadway. That was my.
Paul's, Paul's in the waiting room, just so Eileen knows.
I got it.
Okay. I'll bring them in.
And, and Sal, rather to not belabor the point, but. It's the applicant's testimony that they're bound by all the conditions of the use variance approval and the testimony representation, and there's no changes to any of that.
That's correct.
And I gave, I gave a brief summary, not of every single thing on sheet number three of my most recent revised plan. But if any board members have any particular questions. There are, there is a summary of a number of bullets of, of the items from that, uh, resolution, if you have any questions.
So Eileen, is Paul there?
I'm back, Rich.
Okay, it's all yours.
So, um, you left off with. Jen, and then now Charlie. So we're good, we're, we're good, we're good with John and the, uh, and, and the non-queuing of vehicles pulling in and out of the, uh. The site, correct? And Mr. Chair, the only thing they did was they showed a color rendering. I don't know if Mr. Chair wants to just quickly see that again, if someone could put that back up and then he'll be caught up.
David, you want to put it back up?
And it was marked, Mr. Chair. I think B twenty-nine, I think we established.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. Yeah. Okay.
That was our, the engineer neglected to introduce it when he testified in, initially. So we just brought him back so he could show the board the color rendering. Otherwise, we finished the architectural testimony and actually concluded our presentation.
Mr. Alfieri, on, um. On building B, I just was trying to identify where the, the curtain door was. So you can show it here. I would appreciate that.
David, can you?
I'm sorry, the curtain door? I'm not sure I understand which story you're talking about.
The roller curtain door is the, for, for, for loading?
So on building B, C, and D, the loading platforms are this platform on the corners. So what happens is the truck pulls in, they offload to this platform. And there are side loading doors on each of the buildings. Um, if I can kind of switch back to the A twenty-two exhibit. You can see that. Kind of in this where if you're pulling the truck in, the loading platform is here. And the overhead door is here. If you're talking about building A. Building A has a more traditional orientation where the front door is here and the rear doors for loading are in the back. That has a true loading zone, pull-in, double doors that are, double overhead doors that are shown here. Um, and has full circulation around the building where the other buildings do not have that circulation. So the buildings are loaded slightly differently. And that, that you can see in this elevation with the loading doors.
Can you go back to the other sheet you just showed with building B?
Building B, yes.
So that loading platform on either end works for like warehouse one and warehouse three. A, and then warehouse two is in the, it's in the front.
So warehouse, warehouse two is in the front. Yeah, my apologies.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that as well.
Yeah, and you can see the overhead door shown here.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Mr. Deladonna. So I'm good. I'm caught up. Thank you. Mr. Alfieri, you say you're, you're basically done, is that?
Yes, we're ready to listen to the public and see if we can answer their questions if they have any.
All right. Does the board members have any questions before we open the public?
No.
None, none of the professionals are all satisfied?
Yeah.
Okay. And, uh, of course we talked about sidewalk and Jen said, you're, you're recommending contribution to the. Sidewalk fund, correct?
This particular location, yes.
Okay, got it. All right, fellow board members, can we open it up to public, please? Motion. Cantor?
No, Roscoe.
A Roscoe and, and, and who's, who's seconded?
I'll second it.
All right, Cantor seconds. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we've got it. Eileen, please open it up to public.
The meeting will be now open to the public. If you are calling any, press star nine to raise or lower your hands. And star six to mute and unmute yourselves. No one from the public is raising their hand.
We'll give them another thirty seconds. Okay, not, oh, we got one. Okay. Ms. Dovenero, can you bring her in, please?
Ms. Dovenero will be entering the meeting now.
Candice, welcome.
How are you?
It's all good.
It's so late.
I know. So we got questions and comments for the professional slash the applicant.
Well, I may be a little backtracked on this one because I was not. Really paying attention at the time because it didn't really pertain to my property at that time. So I have a couple of questions and.
Mr. Chairman, can I just swear, Ms. Dovenero in?
Yes, you can.
Hey, raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Can, can you just state your name for the record?
Candice Dovenero, D is in David, O V is in Victor, E N is Nanty, R is in Robert, O fifty-eight Victory Road, Howell, New Jersey, zero seven seven three one. I backed up to this property that you're in question within. Two hundred and fifty feet, my property, because I'm on Victory, backs up to there. So I do have a couple of questions, but, um. I'm, I have a couple of concerns. Um, so none of these builder, buildings are rented yet. Correct?
Right.
So we're building something that's not rented.
That's typically how it's done, but yes.
Well, it's not typically when you get to the planning board. So respectfully, this is a spec building and it's very common. For this to be handled the way it's been handled. Thanks, Jen. I love you.
And, and, and the uses have to be permitted uses in the SED zone. Can't devy, deviate from permitted uses.
Okay, and we're not, we're no longer considering any tracks from agricultural. Correct?
I'm not sure with that.
A whole entire area is SED zoned. Because I'm also block forty-one and I have several lots on that area. And I know that the backing properties are also agriculture and I'm just making sure that none of the other properties that you're considering are. Are AR. The, the site is split zoned. If you guys can bring up the color rendering again, just so that we can show. I think the testimony was the development, the proposed development, um. Is in the SED, but there is, so can you, can you see the blue dotted line? The light blue dotted line?
I, I can.
So the light blue on the, on the top of the screen where the basins and the buffer is, that's in the A R E six. And where the development is, the buildings themselves are located in the SED. And that was, that was vetted out during the use variance hearing, which was about what, two years ago, Sal?
During COVID, the pandemic, right?
Twenty twenty, yeah, it was in twenty twenty.
Right. So there was a lot of things that were, I don't know. I know that you guys aren't lax, but like. People missed because we were zooming and all day long and honestly, I wouldn't want to elect.
I wouldn't want to elect to go on another Zoom in twenty twenty after zooming all day long.
I understand, but I mean, we did have the public hearings, they were noticed properly and and let me tell you, and and Mr. Alfieri can attest that we were not lackadaisical in hearing this application when it came in for the use variance. We were pretty, this is not the original plan that they came in with. This is a deviated plan from when they came in initially.
So, Mr. Chair, and just to chime in on Jen's comments, so the properties to the north are A R E zone. The applicant is providing to maintain the fifty-foot residential buffer along the northly property line and then also to supplement that buffer. And then in the course of the use variance hearings, the site layout, particularly for the rear of the site changed. The site driveway used to be north of the building and they flipped the orientation of that so that the building could provide additional, you know, uh, screening from the properties to the north. So there was consideration to those residential properties as as part of the use variance application.
Yes, Charlie, I'm aware of that. We moved everything out of the uh, A R E when it came to the buildings and we've done a lot on this application over the last few years and the L O I, you know, was the last piece of the puzzle here, along with the architectural designs and the layout and the conformances, so. I'm with you.
All right, I'm just concerned because my property is like lot, block forty-one, I got thirty-four, thirty-six, forty-two. And super close to this, like I almost back to it. Um, do we also have an approval for the sore already?
Uh, not yet. No, we have to get, we, there's a whole, several layers of approval we need to get for sanitary sore, but we typically don't do that until after we get site plan approval in case things change.
No, I'm just preparing ahead.
Yeah, but this can't be built until we get those outside agency approvals.
Okay, and so it's my understanding that the four buildings are going to be built. Are we starting from the front to the back? I may have missed it. I apologize for my ignorance.
Well, the, the, the site improvements are going to be done in one phase.
One phase, so the whole property is being cleared in one phase.
Yes. But the buildings will be built depending upon the market, so I don't know if there, if it's gonna be four buildings at one time or one at a time, we'll have to see. What, the owner is going to occupy one of the buildings, so clearly one building will be built for his business.
So, okay, so what's the operation? Is it twenty-four seven? I know you have a
Now, the, the use variance had a specific condition, it was nine to six, Monday through Friday.
Nine to six, because I've been stuffed right on that road, Oakland Road, because that's how I go to my farm on Victory Road. I cut through it from school. Um, and I get stuck behind the tractor trailers turning into this site closer to uh, the traps. I don't, I guess you guys would call that, so. Um, so that, that does become a problem for busing and we do have busing during that time. So, so it's ninety-six and how many tractor trailers vehicles are we talking during that time? How many deliveries?
Um, it, it again would depend on the tenant mix.
So we don't know that yet?
No.
There was also extensive traffic testimony at the use variance. So I, you know, I understand and and I'm certainly not trying to curtail your questions, but understand that all of these things were vetted out. There was a traffic study, traffic testimony were done as part of the use variance, which was done in twenty twenty, and here we're coming back to just clean up the site issues. Um, so, you know, I just want to make it very clear for everybody who's listening as well as the board, you know, because we have some new faces that all of these items were vetted out during that process.
Thank you, Jennifer. I, I do want to thank all of you for like actually being professional and like staying on things. I don't always, I don't always trust like other, um, I don't always trust applicants' traffic studies. That's just me, like, because I watch plenty word as well. Um, but I do appreciate, like, Jen, you know, you're the bomb, like, you are the hammer as always. So I know I can trust you. Um, I do feel comfortable with that. I do have a couple other questions and then I will let you go. Um, so are buffering as per agricultural, it is acceptable as per your? Jen?
Yes, they are providing the requisite buffer.
Yeah, you can do the thumbs up thing. We can, we can do that. Okay, um, where does, where do the drainage ditches run to? Which water basin and where do the basins flow? Because there is groundwater and we have a high water table in that whole entire area, hence I own nine acres there. I know our water table. I know when everything's gonna flood. I know when my pond is going to breach. Has that been taken into account?
Charlie?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so uh, I can tell you the stormwater management design, obviously the new stormwater rules, uh, the basins have to be designed with green infrastructure, which does rely on infiltration. Having said that, the design for the stormwater management basins doesn't take any credit for exfiltration or infiltration in the stormwater routing. So what that means is more stormwater storage, you're not taking credit for the water going into the groundwater table. As part of that, also, the new stormwater rules require them to do a groundwater mounting analysis. So that's to determine if there's an adverse impact to the groundwater table by infiltrating runoff from these uh, stormwater basins. They've also demonstrated that there's no adverse impacts. We've also had some uh, notes in our, in our review letter about the applicant providing blanket notes on the plans if there is any restrictive horizons to be removed and replaced as required. Um, they do have soil testing for uh, the majority of the basins. There's one small basin, number four, that they have to do a little bit supplemental infiltration testing on that one. Um, but if it's uh, similar to the other three basins, um, you know, it should, it should be pretty straightforward. And then just to clarify, there's an existing drainage crossing north of this site. All their runoff on their site is captured in their stormwater management system, goes into their basins, is required to meet the rate reductions for the stormwater management rules. And then the flow, once it's met all those rate reductions, then ties into an existing municipal conveyance system and a drainage ditch, which ultimately discharges, I believe, to a water course to the west of the properties on the west side of Oakland Road. I, I don't, I believe it's Marsh Bogbrook, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. I don't have the mapping open in front of me, but I'll, I'll confirm that before we're done.
So it's not, it's not Quan, Squankum Brook?
It, it, it could, like I said, I have to open the mapping and and take a look at it. There's, there's a couple that kind of intertwine in this area, but uh, there is a water course and it crosses under Lanes Pond Road. There's a county drainage culvert. Um, you know, with a bridge over there, so.
All right, so, so, so Charlie, Charlie, excuse me, Candace. What does the site look like right now with its runoff and its, um, you know, its sanitary features and all that other stuff? Is that contributing to the ponding that's going on in the area?
So what you have is runoff coming from the site and also from the properties to the north and it kind of gets discharged to Oakland Road and Oakland Road itself across the property frontage here is relatively flat. So uh, any runoff, obviously from the applicant site develop, and then the offsite from the north is being captured with their stormwater management system. Uh, meeting all their stormwater rules and then tying into an existing conveyance system, so. So it's not like they're just piping a discharge to Oakland Road that's flat. That's then gonna exacerbate the ponding issue. It's getting tied into a conveyance system, uh, which ultimately will drain into a water course.
So Candace, I'm hoping that what Charlie's saying in layman's terms, the water, stormwater management with this site will be improved, not degraded.
I understand that. I, I, I hope that that happens. But also then if we have tractor trailers that are sitting there, um, I'm just worried about the emissions and the contaminants that they give off, which they did.
So, and I'll just add to that, Mr. Chair, and Sal can correct me if I'm wrong. There was a condition of the use variance approval that there would be no overnight storage of any tractor trailers or truck vehicles on the site. I believe that was a condition of the approval.
That's correct, no overnight.
Okay, and what about the queue that you're proposing?
That was for an offsite property that's in the area. It wasn't for this.
It's not this, yes.
Okay, and then um, where do we expect the future traffic to come from? Which direction? Is it five, seven, is it route nine, which are backroads? What are we looking?
That was all discussed in detail at the, the use variance phase, so we don't have, uh, nothing's changed since then, so I, I, I don't, I, I'm not in a position to answer that.
So you have no knowledge. I'm sorry I missed that phase, because I'm sure the public would like to know, because I'm sure that several are on right now.
And I'm sure they all asked, because we had several hearings. It wasn't one night.
So, so we have no tenants. We don't know where the traffic's going to be coming from, because we don't have tenants yet. They're not rented.
When you say we don't know, everybody knew when we got the use variance approval, so.
And 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 those records are still available, if anyone wants to review that.
I'll, I'll revisit them as well as I hope the board does, um, because we already know that, um, yeah, the traffic site plan is going to be, i- it is an issue i- in that whole entire area. It's not just your floor, your project. It's that whole area will be inundated with more traffic.
It's an SED corridor.
I understand that, but it's also agricultural. So, yes, this, this particular parcel is mostly SED with interference to be, uh, well, the agricultural was turned during COVID to have that um, usage permit. I understand, and I, and I'm not over speaking, Mr. Say, I understand that. Obviously, you, you supersede me.
No, no, Candace, you know, just, we, we have a five-minute rule for questions.
I'm done.
And five minutes for, for comments. Um, you know, we, we extend hospitality, of course.
Thank you.
And um, you know, this, this application is well in, you know, developed. Been through many, many iterations. And um, you know, we've put the applicant through a lot to get to where we're at.
Okay, and also the last thing I want to add that um, everyone calls the title thirty-nine, meaning the police are going to enforce everything. Um,
Not everything, ju- just, just traffic.
Right, just traffic.
Yeah, in other words, parking, handicap parking, fire zone parking, that type of stuff.
Ingress, egress, the whole nine yards. And hopefully, that happens. So thank you for your time. I appreciate all of you greatly and have a wonderful night. Thank you.
You too, ma'am. Thank you. Eileen, I think we have another.
Betty V will be coming in the meeting now.
Okay. Betty V, welcome.
Good evening.
All right, please, uh, Mr. Bear is going to swear you in, okay?
Yes, can, do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Can you just state your name for the record and your address, please? Spell your last name.
Betty Vales Gimbel, V is in Victor, E L E Z hyphen Gimbel, G I M B E L, ninety-seven Victory Road.
Okay, you're, go ahead, ma'am.
All right. Hi, everyone. Um, it sure does look like you put a lot of work into this. I'm a bit behind eight ball on this one. Um, but uh, it does definitely look like you put a lot of work into that, and so I appreciate um, the little details that I did see in the short time that I've seen it. Um, I just had a couple of questions from my own knowledge. Um, the zone is SED or SED one? Which is it?
Jen?
So because this application has been pending since, you know, for a while, they're under the SED zoning.
Okay, that's fine. And my question um, was again, from my own knowledge, the hours of operation you have from nine to six, was that part of the original plan or was that also um, part of the conditions that this board put forth?
That was part of the conditions that the board imposed on the applicant as part of the use variance.
Great, thank you so much. I greatly appreciate that to the board, nine to six. Amazing, that's great. Um, so that's really um, all my questions and I um, appreciate that and you have a good evening.
You're welcome. Thank you, miss.
Good night.
Good night now. Eileen, do we have anyone else?
No one else from the public is raising their hand.
Okay, can I have a motion to close the public?
Motion to close, Mr. Chair.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barilla. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the ayes got it. Eileen, we're close to public.
Meeting will now close to public.
Mr. Alfieri, do you have a submission for us?
Very brief, your, uh, your honor, Mr. Chair, uh,
I would like for you to take as much time as you can to explain the whole process that you've been through to this point.
Okay, sure. We, um, as the board knows and as municipal land use law provides, we can do what's a bu- called a bifurcated application where we came in with a site plan, a, a concept plan in an effort to get the use approved. The initial plan had buildings in both the A R E six or, or A R E, whichever number it is, and the S a six and the SED zone. We, and we were developing the entire site essentially. We also had a lot of activity that would, would have occurred on the residential side of the property. Um, uh, during multiple hearings at the use variance phase, the board toned down the project significantly, consistent with what you've seen tonight. Uh, all the buildings are in now in the proper zone. Uh, we've provided significant buffering. On top of that, um, we've now, because of the new stormwater management regulations, had to re- completely redesign stormwater management system. We've had many, uh, we've had at least one or two tech meetings with board professionals. Many iterations of the plans to get the stormwater management to the point where it is now, so it complies with the new regs. We've also, as a result of that, had to connect to the public sewer now. We've eliminated septic systems. Um, and of course, as we've indicated, there are several many conditions that were imposed as part of the use variance, which will carry over to the site plan. So we think that, you know, as a collective effort between the applicant, it's been very accommodating. The board professionals who have been very thorough and the board itself, very thorough, we think we've come up with a, a very good project that we would request the board act favorably on.
Thank you, Mr. Alfieri. Jen, any last words?
Nothing for me.
Okay, Charlie?
Just one uh, clarification. It's the Haystack Brook that's located on the west side of uh, Oakland Road there, just to make sure the record is straight.
Thank you, Charlie. Miss Barrow?
No, nothing else.
Okay. So um, you know, eligible voters on this, Eileen?
I think this would be everybody, wouldn't it be?
Everyone should, this, this is our first hearing on the site plan.
All right, so we're good. All right. Well, my fellow board members, uh, you know, you've heard it all and um, you know, what's, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, like, if, if nobody else is gonna speak up.
Mr. Cantor, you've been, I can see you biting at the bit. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we grant the preliminary and final major site plan with all variances requested by the applicant with, with all conditions put forth by our professionals.
And recorded on record, right?
Yes.
Okay, we got a motion to approve. Do we have a second on this?
I'll, I'd like to second that, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hughes? Second. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Alfieri, this is the way we like to get it done, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes.
Application is approved.
Good night, everyone. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good night, Sal.
All right, thank you.
So there's no other applications on the agenda. Eileen, when's the next meeting?
February twenty-seven.
February twenty-seven. Okay, so uh, with that, thank you to all the professionals. Thank you to all the members. Appreciate you. Uh, enjoy the rest of the week and um, and take good care. So can I have a motion to adjourn? Appreciate you, uh, enjoy the rest of the week, and, um, and take good care, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Roscoe and Hughes, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Happy Valentine's, folks.
Happy Valentine.
Good night, all.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Love, take care.